I'd like to call the meeting to order. And if we could have a moment of silence, please. Please rise for the flag.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, and Cablevision of Warwick, and posted in the Administration Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Roll call, Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. Romeo?
Here.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Here.
Mr. Drew?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mr. Greeno?
Mr. Greeno has to be excused.
Mrs. Fritz?
Here.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Here.
Ms. O'Brien?
Mrs. O'Brien also has to be excused.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Dr. Anamone?
All right, before we do the public hearing presentation, I'm going to go to Kelsey first, if she wants to do her report early. Thanks.
Okay, so I have quite a few, is this on? I have, I'll just speak loud. I have quite a few things for today, so first I'm going to start with some stuff that we've had in the past. On April 11, there was the National Art Honor Society induction ceremony at the high school, and students were also able to display their artwork. On April 24, there's also the World Language Honor Society induction ceremony. And then the following day, yet another Honor Society induction, was the National Honor Society induction. And then moving to today, we had freshmen and sophomores start their standardized testing, and this will continue tomorrow and then the following day, May 2nd. And during this time, AP teachers hold review sessions, so that's nice for the AP students to get some extra review time in before they have their big tests. Tomorrow will be the National Decision Day, so all seniors are being asked to wear the shirt that would like represent what their field they're going into or college you're going to. May 1 through 3, there will be a jazz band festival. The high school will have their AP testing, May 6 through May 17. May 17 will also be Highlander Day, and for those who don't know what Highlander Day is, it's, yeah, it's a fun day for the high school kids to kind of like get a break outside of the classroom, all the clubs set up, tables, and it's just events outside, food and music. And last but not least, I wanted to give a shout out and congratulations to Zach Milco on being named Scholar-Athlete Award winner for the Passaic County chapter of the Football Foundation and College Hall of Fame. So, that's what I have.
Thank you.
All right, now, do you have a presentation? Or do you want to go aside?
We have our public hearing tonight, this is the end of our budget cycle here for 2019-20. So the budget that we're presenting to you to vote on tonight has been changed since the March preliminary budget vote. It has been revised downward. Tax levy has been reduced since we last discussed this in March. The total budget only increases by 1.51 percent, and the general fund by just a little bit over that. Our administrative cost, which is the state-acquired funding that we do, is lower than the regional limit, which is North Jersey. What that means is we spend more money in our classrooms than other districts. We spend less money on administrators than other districts in our area, which is North Jersey. So our timeline, obviously we had a little hiccup here in January with the, we had a board meeting snowed out. Other than that, you can see we're right on schedule here, April 30 is public hearing. The budget you're getting right now, 1819, ends in two months, and this new fiscal year will not begin for another two months, July 1. So this budget has to be good for the next 14 months, basically. Curriculum highlights, if you can go back?
Sure. I'm just going to go over a few. These are all items that we've talked about in this room and in an Ed Committee various times throughout the school year. First one I want to highlight is, wasn't on the preliminary budget for discussion, but we're going to add it in here tonight, is the company called Linkit. Linkit is a data warehousing platform. We've recently completed a number of different pilots throughout the district where we've been able to either practice their, or use their standards-based assessment, which is a tool that gives us some predictive data about how our students could perform on Park or what's now the NJ SLA, and provides us some of that instant feedback to give us, you know, things that students could be working on to improve. Also with Linkit, we have the ability to upload all of our district data. We can put our Park scores, our STAR math scores, our Fuentes and Pennell Benchmark assessments for reading, any local data points that we've been collecting over the years, we can put in one location and allow easy access to our administrators and, more importantly, our teachers. This brings the data discussion to the end user, the person who can use it the most is the classroom teacher. Gives them instant access to that data without having to wait for the report or that type of thing. So we're really excited to begin working with Linkit. We're in the process of finalizing the specifics of the pilot. We have a couple of teachers who have begun to build their own assessments, their final exams, so to speak, in the platform for Linkit, so it's another avenue that we can work on with this pilot, so we're excited for that option. We've been speaking about it for a few years. We're coming up on year four of our Readers and Writers Workshop training program. This is, you know, in year three, we've been working with most of our grade levels, grades K through eight. We've been able to work with our consultant to teach our staff and really train in this area. We are coming up on the end of our phonics training for the implementation of our Phonics First Program, which has been widely successful from what we hear in staff and community feedback in terms of the tools that our students are using. And also as a parent, I see the, you know, I can see the difference in my kindergartner versus other kids that I've had with previous programs. So we are in the process of completing that training and still being able to train any new staff who may work with that program going forward. Our Word Work is just getting going. In a few moments, when we shift over to Director of Ed Report, I'm going to highlight some of our summer committees. One of those summer committees is the Word Work Committee. It's a group of teachers led by Sharon West, our Language Arts Supervisor, who I see in the building tonight. They'll be working together to look at programs that are spelling-based, vocabulary, all of the topics that go along with Word Work. We are, each year, adding piece by piece toward what we would call a complete language arts program in our elementary schools, and Word Work is one of the last pieces of that process. I'm just going to mention, skip down to Physics for All. We are going to implement next year a process where every student in their course throughout high school is going to be exposed to physics in their science course of studies. We are also in the process of, I don't say revamping, we are, I guess, reimagining how our elementary students are entering the middle school in terms of mathematics. We have, I've mentioned a few times in here, we have three buildings that are piloting leveled mathematics in the elementary schools, and we have three schools that are still teaching with a traditional approach of, one teacher teaches all the math, one teacher teaches all the language arts. Through that process, we've been able to identify a cohort of students who are able to qualify for Algebra I at the seventh grade level. So we're in the process of scheduling that through our guidance counselors and through our supervisory staff to make sure that that class is up and running. And that's it. Any questions about anything on there?
For our local faculty increase, this is, this year, it's going to be 1.99 percent of our eight-year average. This boy's done a tremendous job over the last eight years, but keeping it very, very, very low. Only 1.36 percent annualized over eight years. So this is where it gets a little sticky. We went over about an $816,000 reduction in state aid last year. This year, we absorbed a $950,000 loss of state aid. So these are our actual numbers. These are the estimates for the next five years. So we looked at a seven-year implementation of having our state aid cut to half, actually more than half. So, and this is, as of now, this summer, could be reduced even lower next year or the year after. So they're going to run the state funding formula every single year, which accounts for enrollment adjustments, attach it to ability to pay, there's a few variables in there, but this is what we're looking at for next budget year, $1.5 million reduction in state aid. So 1920 budget, again, it's a 1.99 increase in property taxes, only a 1.53 percent increase in the general fund. The difference is due partially to the loss of state aid. So our revenues here, you see some red on the board here, this is obviously state aid. Tuition numbers are down, and our miscellaneous revenue, we're anticipating not meeting this number this year, so we did lower it by about 18 or 19 percent. Employee health benefit contribution, this is something that was implemented a few years ago with Chapter 78. There are four tiers, and the reason I'm giving you this slide and the next one is to show you that over time, you can see the increase in tier one, two, three, four. So a lot of the low tax increases that we've had in the past eight years, we do it through this, we're getting more money for our employee benefit contribution every year, and then it flattened out, and now it's starting to decline. If you just go back, you see that the percentage of our budget, it was going up, and now it's going back down again. So these have actual numbers here, estimated numbers moving forward. So this is just more pressure on the budget. Our expenses, again, very modest increases in the right-hand column, if at all. Our tax levy impact, the tax levy, this is very good for our taxpayers and budget is very well steer, involves a lot of layoffs, but it's also favorable to our taxpayers. So there's actually a decrease in school taxes on the median assessed home, which you can see has changed in value year to year. Doesn't mean that's what the house is worth, it just means that's where it's assessed down. So that has changed year over year, increase in radibles, decrease in debt service. So the homeowner in West Milford in the median home is going to take $2 less a year in taxes on the school portion of his or her property taxes. So it's a home run for the taxpayers, and we're very proud of that. So these are the efficiencies we effectuated to get to this point. We have a reduction of a significant amount of staff members, all up in here. One administrator, elementary, middle, high school, we have one district-wide position which floats, and then we have some continued chair services with the township. Dr. LaCuisine doing a great job of reducing the number of students in private schools, which are very expensive, very expensive, bringing them back to the district. So our tuition is declining backwards, so we're squeezing every, whichever way we can squeeze. Capital projects this year, we have a couple of them. We have the transportation lot, which is just inside the fenced-in area, which is the majority of the transportation lot. The perimeter where the bus drivers park their own cars will not be paved, but where the buses park will be paved. The back bedroom floor will be replaced, and obviously we're well in the middle of our recent. So what does the future look like? We're anticipating a significant cut in state aid this year, about $1.5 million, and our fund balance will decline dramatically, perhaps $500,000. So if you add 1.5 billion to half of that, we've got a possible $2 million shortfall in the 2021 budget. Do you want to raise any questions?
I see that there have been cuts throughout the entire district, teachers, administrators. How has the board office been affected?
In this budget, there are no cuts. Moving forward, there will be cuts moving forward. I don't hear me said credit.
I want to know why the entire district suffers and the board office stays in place.
We're suffering still, but the regulation, the requirement of state reporting doesn't change whether you go from 3,200 students to 31. We're still filing the same reports statewide. That doesn't really change based on your population. We could go up 1,000 students, we still have the same amount of reports, we wouldn't even need to add people. There will be cuts eventually, I just don't think we're at that point now, but I would look, it could be a cut in next year. Yes, bud?
So, sorry. The 222 reduction in the household levy seems to me that it's going to be on the backs of our township businesses. Would that be a correct assumption?
We have no way of knowing that.
That would be something, the town, the tax assessor's office would know. I really don't know the businesses, what kind of taxes they're paying.
Do you think that the renovations done at ShopRite have increased the radibles of the commercial properties in town?
We have no way of knowing that information.
It's a good guess, I think.
Excuse me?
I think it would be a good guess.
Well, you know, as I drive through town...
It's got to come from somewhere.
Well, I mentioned that to you yesterday in our phone conversation, but I think as you drive through town, you also see homes that are being renovated and all of that. I mean, if you put a bathroom in your house, you're going to get a tax change because you have to file a building permit, and when you file a building permit, you're going to have a reassessment, so...
We had a meeting yesterday morning, we were in discussion with the mayor, and the mayor told us that there were, that applying for building permits had gone up as far as for renovations and that, this year, by a large amount. The number, we don't, the number that you see there, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Barb, that number comes from you, from the tax assessor.
Right. That all comes from the tax assessor.
So we can only work with the numbers that they give us.
I can, I just calculate the impact of the tax levy based upon the information that I get on the radibles.
Okay. I have more questions, if I could continue.
Mrs. Dwyer?
All right, thank you. So, the taxes will increase this year, and obviously this is what's going to hit the household, is a reduction in 222 per year. Being that we are using capital reserve in this next budget and maintenance reserve in this next budget, that means that the total operating budget for next year is going to have $600,000 that's going to be filled by, my assumption is going to be a tax increase.
No. A reserve account means it's a bank account. That money is already set aside to be used for maintenance, which we have every year because we have a maintenance staff. We put that money aside, so we're taking money out of our bank account.
And it's accounted as, it's counted as a revenue for next year.
Right.
But then the following year, when the budget doesn't go down, I imagine that it's only going to increase overall, where is the revenue going to fill that one-time reserve revenue?
The reserves could only be used for specific things. You have to have a capital project in order to use capital reserve. So we're still doing part of the transportation yard. That's about a $930,000 expenditure, and we're using $500,000 of capital reserve to offset that cost. One of the things that I've spoke about many times in the last few years is that when you do a capital project, you only have to do it once. So the chances of us needing to do the inside lot of the bus depot again, I'm not going to have to see that, and I don't think very many people sitting at this table are going to see that either. So when you use a maintenance reserve, our maintenance reserve account can only be used to offset our required maintenance costs. So we just can't use it for any reason if we don't have expenses that are associated with that restriction. Those are restricted accounts.
So do you anticipate that next year's, or the following year's budget is going to reduce the overall budget by the amount of that one-time project?
Well, the $938,000 that we're spending this year for the transportation lot in 1920 is not going to appear in 2021. That's not to say there won't be other projects that need to be addressed, but if you take out, if you eliminate a capital project, it's not going to appear in the next budget. If we buy equipment this year in our capital budget, it's not going to appear next year. Something different may appear, but that same thing, it's, you know, we can only buy so many snow blowers or trucks, so, you know, it's a moving target. Capital expenses are a moving target. Your fixed expenses are in your general fund, because they're needed, as many people say, 80 percent of your budget is fixed costs. It's your salary, it's your benefits, it's your instructional materials, you know, it's your tuitions, it's your transportation. Transportation is an expense that we have to incur here in West Milford that many other districts don't have, and, you know, it's cavalier to say that, let the kids walk. I wouldn't want my kids walking even up Highlander Drive, because it could be potentially a dangerous situation, because the roads are, you don't have clear sight, you don't, you have animals that come out. I mean, we had bears at the board office last week. So, I mean, you have to be cognizant of your environment when you make some decisions. So transportation is a big cost in West Milford, even though we're continually, you know, looking for ways to trim that out. So, you know, capital expenses don't necessarily, are not going to necessarily translate into next year's budget.
So the capital reserve is used as tax relief, right?
The capital reserve account is used to offset the cost of a particular item. Tax relief, it would, in a sense, yes, in that it means that we're not going to raise taxes in order to do that particular project. But if you don't have the project to do, you don't need to raise the taxes. So that's the whole point of putting money aside, so that when you have a big expense like that, and it's a capital reserve or a capital project, you can pull from your capital reserve in order to mitigate your costs.
So the $75,596-plus thousand that is being proposed tonight includes a revenue of $600,000 in reserve funds that are going to be used and anticipated as revenues for that year, which means that in 2020 and 2021, that $500,000 or $600,000 is going to have to come from somewhere, because this budget, I don't anticipate that 2020, 2021 is going to have a total budget that's less than this, unless significant cuts are made in the tune of, at this point...
But we still have, we still have maintenance reserve, so yes, next year we'll have, we'll put money into, to offset our maintenance costs, our required maintenance. But if you don't have a project that you're going to tap into, last year we didn't use capital reserve. This year, we're using capital reserve. So we had capital projects that we funded through your budget of fund balance. We didn't use our capital reserve accounts to fund the 18, 19 capital projects. So whether or not we're going to use our capital reserve next year, whether or not we're going to have any capital projects to use that capital reserve, that hasn't been determined. We're still trying to get through the 1920 school budget.
Mrs. Dwyer has a question.
Okay. I'm going to go in a little different direction. I'm concerned about the money that we spend, thousands and thousands, on professional development, and yet our math scores go down, our language arts are starting to go down, and I don't feel that the professional development is addressing the needs of our district. When I look at the summer committee meetings, I'm wondering why, thousands and thousands of dollars spent on this also, why are they not done as professional learning communities during the school year in lieu of a faculty meeting where many of the things discussed could be done in a memo, or a department meeting where many of the things that are discussed could be done in a memo? I think teachers would be more engaged in a professional learning community, a true professional learning committee, where you're doing the work that's done in the summer. I think it's beneficial to teachers, I think it's beneficial to the students, I think supervisors have more control over what's going on in a professional learning committee than putting this one over here, putting this one over here, and having a motivational speaker. With the amount of money that's being cut, I think that we need to look at professional development in different ways. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yeah, maybe we could, can we shift back into what our seats, then maybe we'll use where to go around?
If I could just clarify one thing, motivational speakers come out of my Title II federal funds, never out of local money. I've never spent a local dime on a motivational speaker.
I don't see it, I don't see those scores going up.
I would like to sit on my own seat.
I think you had a question, Dave, I'm sorry.
Yeah, not too much question, a couple of observations, comments. Yeah, the state aid losses coming up is scary, you know, $7 million. I've been looking at some of the information on this, you know, for the current year, there's 197 districts that lost about $90 million. That went to 368 districts. The state kicked in another $205 million to those, so those 368 districts actually got $296 million. It kind of boggles my mind why, you know, we get hit. We had the 18th largest loss of any of the districts in the state. How they figured this all out, as far as I'm looking more into it, this all really started in 2007, they started looking at this, and they came up with formulas, they tried to tweak it and everything. I really think that needs to be challenged, you know, we've talked about this, because that was before the Great Recession. The Highlands Act really hadn't even kicked in, that was passed in 2004, really didn't get going. It's just the inequity of, you know, when you look at the numbers overall of all the districts, and, yeah, we're not Jersey City, we didn't lose $27 million, but, yeah, we don't have high-rise condos and everything going up all over the place either. One thing I found a little disturbing in how they figured this out, they, you know, to come up with the adequacy budget and so forth, and they say, well, then they figure, well, this is how much the town could do, looking at the personal wealth and the real estate wealth of the community. I'd really like to know, you know, find out where they're coming up with those numbers. So again, I think it's something, you know, I'd like to help drill down into, because, yeah, losing $7 million is, in the next couple of years, is going to be devastating.
I am looking forward to putting, I would like to put you as the committee chair for that, because I know that you got a fire for it, and I really think that you're hitting on the head, is because the state is saying that we can afford to pay, so we should.
Yeah, I'd like to know how they figured that one out.
I think that they use state income tax to figure that out.
Yeah, look at income tax, and again, I don't know how, and then property wealth, but I'd really like to see how that's done, you know, looking over the numbers, even how, like with transportation aid, I think we get like $800,000 or so. I'm looking at, my brother lives in Dunlop, they bus nobody, they don't even own a school bus, everybody walk. They get over $200,000, you know, in transportation aid. I know some of that goes for, you know, special education, that sort of thing, but, you know, this doesn't seem to click.
Doesn't match, yeah.
Yeah. So in closing, I'd like to thank the administration for doing a pretty good job, given the bad hand you were dealt this year for last minute.
I can tell you with transportation, we only get aid on the students that fall within the administrative guidelines, which are two miles for elementary and two and a half miles for high school and for special ed. So for all of those students that we're doing courtesy busing for because of the rural roads... roads and the late buses that we run for students, we're not getting funded for that.
Unfortunately, we live in a community, we don't have any sidewalks. You know, we do have bears, I believe there was a bear at the high school today during practice. So, there are a lot of, you know, extenuating issues that involve our district, but I don't think anyone sitting around this table would want to see any child walking to school. And probably each one of our elementary schools fall into that category of less than two miles where your children are being bused.
Or close to it, yeah.
So, you would almost be wiping out your transportation for your elementary kids. So, and I don't think anybody sitting here is looking.
And another thing that you need to recognize with our transportation is because of the number of miles our buses travel, they wear out a lot faster. And, you know, we're lucky that we have really good mechanics and they're on top of things. But if we were, and we take in buses from other school districts and we do their repairs also. If we had to send our repairs out to other districts, it would be even more costly. So, I think in many ways, we're being very efficient, given the circumstances that we have to deal with. And every school district has different situations, so I appreciate your insight.
Yeah, some of the things I'm going to find out, how do they figure out this number? I see some district that seems like it.
Many years ago, they started, they wanted to follow the student. They want the money to follow the student. And that's, that was the implementation of New Jersey SMART, which is one major headache. Talk about compliance, Mrs. Dwyer.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Drew?
I'd like to reiterate a little bit of what Ms. Dwyer said. In looking at the overall budget, obviously, we've got to make some adjustments here. And it seems to me that the cuts have been borne by the teachers. I'm really disappointed in the last 10 years, we increased administrative staff. It's great we're below the maximum allowed, but we've increased administrative staff to the extent that we made adjustments for the enrollment. Seems to be borne almost exclusively by the teachers. I just don't think that's what they need to be frankly, they're the core of our education system. So, I want to say, you know, we got paid here, I wish we didn't have paid, but it needs to be shared paid. So, that bothers me. Mrs. Dwyer made another point that, about the summer training. In looking at the summer training, one thing that really stood out to me is that we're doing character and all kinds of things. I already math on that. And I have taught now for three, four years about the need to improve math. And I know we appear to be making this effort, but I don't see results. And it's disappointing that we're not trying. I think a part of what we need to do is to really sit down and think about how we can, if we need to spend money, how we spend money to improve math performance in this district. And I'm just not seeing that. Sorry, I have two comments.
Anyone else?
Can I just address Mr. Drew's comment? Mr. Drew, I know that, I've been here eight years, and in the last eight years, I can name at least four supervisory positions that were cut from eight years ago when I first got here. We've compressed the supervisors that we do have, so they're now responsible for multiple disciplines. We used to have an industrial arts supervisor, that's now been incorporated with other things. The athletic director is now responsible, not only for, as an athletic director, he's also responsible for health and phys ed. When Dr. McLaughlin was here, he implemented a testing supervisor, that position's gone. This year, the guidance position's going to be gone. We've, so there's a lot of, there has been a lot of compression over the years. And I think that it's, you know, some of the things that you want to accomplish from a layperson's point, because I'm a layperson, I'm not in the trenches, you need your supervisors there to help guide it. And they do have expertise. I've worked with these people on a regular basis and I try to help them as much as possible to do the things that they need to do for kids, so.
Percentage-wise, it's been the biggest cut in any employment group in the district over the last five to seven years. Not in total numbers because it's a smaller group, but by percentage. Administration in general, there's been some assistant principals who have been retired, not rehired. So, by percentage, it's the largest cut in the district over the past probably five to seven years.
I have another question, because I'm not sure of this. Who drives the professional development? Is it the administration or is it the supervisors and the teachers?
The media.
That wasn't my question. The question was, who decides what professional development will take place? Is it the teachers and the supervisors or is it you and Dr. Anemo?
I think it's a collaborative approach. You'd say everybody, we have a local professional development committee, everybody has a say. There's sometimes where it's more teacher-driven, sometimes it's more principal or supervisor-driven, sometimes it comes from Mr. Novak or myself.
Is there a committee?
Yes.
Are there teachers on that committee?
Yeah, for the last, since the onset of ACHIEVE NJ, we've had the DIAC, the District Evaluation Advisory Committee, which in West Milford has been more robust than it has been throughout the rest of the state of New Jersey, from what I understand. The state no longer required the DIAC, and this was the last year of its being implemented. So, that's been the committee for professional development for the last few years.
I do, I do, I do agree with Terry because in the years past, we had a professional development committee that met, that had teachers on it, had representatives of the union, they had, I believe even a board member sat on it at that time, and we would have a year, like, the committee would meet, I thought they met like twice a year. They would meet and they would have an agenda and then they would talk about where we're going for the year ahead. And we would have a list of what the professional development was going to be in alignment with. The board would know what they were working on and the teachers would have that information. I don't know, is that something that we get away with and we, maybe it's something that we should be going back to because of the change in, like, just the change in our test scores, the fact that we're looking at the issues of math and we're looking at the stuff with the, with the language arts. Maybe there is some area that we should be addressing. Did you have something, Liz?
I did. I guess just sitting back, I don't, I don't know what words to use. I don't know if the word is a little bit disappointed, I'm not quite sure, but just kind of like thinking back on professional development and I've been in the district for six years, I started out as supervisor, moved to director. I do feel like it is a collaborative process, like what Dr. Anemo is saying. I feel like even special ed is a part of that process with teachers, with staff. I feel like it's really driven, if I'm reflecting and looking on it, from the district goals that we set. Like, a lot of our professional developments on differentiated instruction, there is math, there's pretty much, you know, this year we kind of increased in that area of mental health and well-being. So, I feel like that kind of drives our groups and our feelings. I don't, I don't want anyone or the public to feel that it's an isolated thing by just Dr. Anemo and Mr. Novak because I know I'm a part of that process. Our administrative team, we have an admin council meeting tomorrow, that's where we talk about what other needs we need. They're then a liaison from the teachers to us, side committees. I just feel like a lot of the work that is being done over the past six years is beneficial. I feel like we have been growing. And even as far as like speakers that came in, most recently on co-teaching, we brought an expert in. That's, that's what our teachers said, we need more training when we were holding them accountable for in-class resource and co-teaching. So, then we brought in a trainer for that. And then the training happened and now we're going to have follow-through in department meetings in next year. So, I just, I think I'm just kind of sitting back and a little bit surprised maybe is a better word than disappointed, that it's kind of coming up because I feel like it's been vetted through these different, like, avenues. I mean, and maybe if there's an area that we need to focus on more, or I know math is a concern that you, that the board brings up quite a bit, but I just feel like we are as a, as a district, I want to speak on behalf of the teachers, the admin team and us, like in central office, I think, I think we are working collaboratively to try to make growth in that area.
I think maybe part of the disconnect might be is that we're not getting the information on what's getting done. So, maybe that's where the questions are coming. Maybe we have to do a better job of maybe asking, us asking the questions or the information coming into the board so that the board members know that things are happening on a professional development.
Because we hear, I hear, we hear nothing about professional learning committees, communities, and that is such an advantage in schools like Mountain Lakes, Fairlawn, Ridgewood. That's what they're doing. And it doesn't seem that we're going in that direction. And I'm concerned about that because we're spending so much money.
We've devoted one faculty meeting a month for the last five or six years to professional learning communities. We're one of the few districts that I can say actually has given up a contractual faculty meeting for the process of professional learning communities.
I think we need more, okay.
You have something?
Yeah. So, the first thing is a question, Mr. Novak, are you giving a presentation on the committees?
I'm going to, yes, I'm going to talk a little bit about the committees.
Okay, because they've kind of come up, so I do have questions about that, but I'm going to wait until after the resolution. And then the other was professional development, is that coming up because of the committees or just?
Because of the cost, because of the cost. Yep, absolutely.
Nicole?
I think, I just want to make a comment in general because I know this is tough conversation and I think, obviously, this isn't a one point in time with this budget. We know that, I think, you know, I envy, you know, I don't envy any of you for the tough decisions. I think while we are losing staff and we are losing, I think it's a balance, it's about a balance. You have to balance the training of the staff that's here with the curriculum enhancements. I mean, I think we've talked a lot about enhancements with math and there is more work to do, but I think you can only do so much in one year. And so, I think we have to kind of be a little fair in that this stuff takes time and there's, I mean, the data warehousing, I mean, there's a lot that that's going to tell us. So, I feel like maybe, you know, I'm on the positive side of understanding the value of the work that went into all of this. And it's a balance and I think it's a huge district, there's a lot, I think, that goes into managing a district of this size and you can't get rid of, you know, all the staff and supervisors to run a district this large. But we're continuing to ask them to do more and more and more, but then, you know, you got to have people to run that stuff. I mean, you know, corporate world, it's the same thing, you know, you throw in projects of people, you need people to run the project. So, I think what you're doing and what we're trying to accomplish here is a good balance of capital projects, education, staffing, you know, special services, there's, you still want to excel as a district. And so, I think it's going to get tougher, but, you know, I think where we got to was a pretty fair compromise.
Can I make one more observation? I know that it sounds horrific when we have to cut staff, but I think it's important. And I think that there's been so much said about, you know, it's a shame that younger teachers get cut because, you know, we have teachers that are tenured. But I think that West Milford has been fortunate because many of the retirements have not been replaced. And so, we've not lost, it's almost like we got lucky because we have our younger teachers and they're still with us and we've been able to cut by attrition. And that's always helpful because, you know, it's almost like on your terms, you're not really making those hard decisions with your younger staff that are vibrant and exciting and innovative and more technology savvy. So, I think that we've been fortunate the last few years because we've had some rolling retirements. So, that's just another observation that I wanted to share.
I also, I want to thank the administrative team for putting the budget together because they did an excellent job. First of all, I don't think I've ever seen a budget come in where we're in the negative for $2, even $2. So, I'm sitting, looking at this budget this year and I'm saddened by some of the, some of the things, but what Barbara did say is a lot of what we are losing this year, we have absorbed through attrition and we have to be thankful for that. And I'm very thankful to the staff because I'm sure there are some staff members that may have made a decision to retire this year when maybe they were thinking about waiting another year, but they saw where the district was going and they were, they're part of the community too, and they took that, you know, lead and helped us. So, we have to be thankful about that. I'm amazed at where we're sitting with this budget because I thought we were going to be, it was, I know that next year's not, is going to be tougher, but I feel that each person sitting around the table, especially the administration, has put, you know, put the hard work in and they're going to put even more hard work in next year to get to where we need to go. And I also feel that as a board, we have to make that political plunge and do what we need to do to fight for this district because we didn't create the situation, but we have to find a way to help our community. I want to thank both Dr. Anemo, Mr. Novak and Barbara and also Liz for all their hard work because I know that they've been working on. And sometimes they look at us and we're probably asking for some things that they don't, they don't want to hear, but, you know.
It's like they have three heads.
You know, we are appreciative.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, thank you so much for the work.
The long process and we're at the end of it now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It was very, very difficult.
I am still looking forward to tomorrow.
All right. Any other, yes, Mr. Drew?
Thank you very much. I've, you look at something like this, it's much easier to be named, you know, and we frequently forget the positive. There are lots of things in here that I don't necessarily like, but I think we've done a lot of positive things. And there are things that we should be proud of as a district. I think the single best thing we do is our graduation rate. The kids who start in school in West Milford graduate, they stay with one of them to get a diploma, and there's just nothing more important than that for these kids. We have one of the best music programs in the entire nation. We have an outstanding special education program. I think we've got other than ECTI, just industrial arts program, there are other things that we do really well and that's the result of a lot of our work. Over the last few years, despite the fact that we faced some budget issues, we have redone the auditorium, we did the greenhouses, we've got microscopes in the biology classes, we introduced robotics program.
Bleachers.
We put in bleachers, and we're putting in a new field house. We've really, I think, accomplished an awful lot. Besides on the field house, which of course is very critical, spending that much money on it, we went back to the drawing board and kept figuring out ways that we could get the field house. I think a better field house for less money, and I really appreciate that effort. I bring this up partly because one of the things I see in this budget that I don't necessarily like is spending $938,000 on a parking lot that is not used by the public, it's not used by the students, it's not used by the teachers. And I now, in my own case, I've been here six years, I repave my driveway twice because of just the nature of New Jersey. The water freezes and then it thaws and it gets in the crack and when it freezes again overnight, it expands. So, it's just the nature of what we're facing here with this freeze-thaw cycle every winter, cracks get bigger, pavement gets destroyed. In my own case, one of the things that I do, I can't walk down my driveway because it turns into a shitty device. I, in fact, wind up walking in the dirt because it's rough ground that I don't slip on. I've fallen down my driveway three times now, so now I don't. I would like you to think about, I brought this up before, instead of repaving this and having to come back and repave it again in five years or six years or whatever it is, pouring gravel on the whole thing. You can walk on the gravel and you won't slip. It'll cost way less than $938,000. We're probably going to approve this budget, but I really would like Mr. Kelly and Ms. Francis to take a look at doing something like that because I think we can get the useful space that we need, have to, no impact on the public, and spend way, way, way less money. I want that money for education and teachers, not a parking lot.
Have you brought the financial advice?
I brought it up, but it was.
Let's have discussion, but not yet. Let's have discussion, but not yet between each other. Thank you.
Karen?
Any other discussion?
Can I address that?
Sure, go ahead. Barbara's gonna address it.
As I mentioned a number of times, we've had, we've had a number of workman's comp accidents there. We have runoff issues that freeze overnight. We have, we have to pave that lot in order to get the buses rolling and get them cleaned off.
Plow it, plow it.
You know, and plow it, thank you. We have to plow it in the morning. And that in itself is an art form, just getting those buses out of that depot in order to get them on the road. So I don't know how gravel, you know, we filled the potholes as much as we possibly could to, but then what happens is that just, you know, you lose the gravel again, you know. And I don't anticipate having to repave it again because I don't think it's been repaved probably since it was put in, in 1970-something.
It hasn't been paved since I was there and I was on the board back in the 90s.
So I think that that's the original pavement from when the, yeah, the Arnold's family gave us the property so that you could put the depot in. So I understand how you feel, but I also think that we have to protect the bus drivers and the mechanics that work down there and our, and our maintenance staff that go down there. And we don't need to make their jobs any more difficult because they have monumental tasks just getting school up and running. So we're trying to give them the tools that they need too to be safe and to keep everything going. Because if they can't get kids to school, they're not gonna learn. We need those kids in the buildings. So everybody has to work together in order to make it happen. So we have to try to make their lives a little easier too. I'm gonna get off my soapbox now.
I mean, I understand what Barbara just said about, I guess my two questions are this. I never thought about a gravel parking lot. It's a really out-of-the-box idea. How much would it cost and would there be safety issues would be my question. Because I do agree with what Steve said, which is I would like to see the money follow the student. I would like to see money in our classrooms and more, you know, social workers in our elementary schools and more resources for our kids. However, I definitely want our bus drivers to be safe also. So I, those are just two.
Well, we have, we have, we have had incidents of them falling because of the parking lot. We also, I can speak only as a homeowner. I have a gravel driveway and when you go to pave, when you go to plow your driveway, I lose all my gravel every winter. So it, it, it's not a good area that you, you still leave snow and you still leave ice on top of the gravel, which still causes the problem that we have, which is the ice and somebody slipping and falling. We have, but we have the maintenance driving buses through that thing that clears all the snow off the top and knocks the snow on the ground and then they gotta plow it and move it and shovel it. I don't think putting gravel, I think, I understand your, your thought because of ice and that, but I think in that particular setting, you really need a blacktop because it needs to be able to be paved and cleared so that this way we don't have the risk of the ice and people falling and that. So, and I don't want to spend that kind of money on blacktop either, but I think it's something that really does need to be done. I mean, we finally got everything cleared down there where we can do the blacktop. It's probably gonna be a one-time issue and, you know.
Yeah, I won't have to have this conversation again.
Well, hopefully not, but still have to have an conversation.
Well, we will because we're only doing the inside. And where they park their cars, there's huge difference in that area too.
And we, and we repair them.
This isn't over when, when, you know, we're only doing the inside where the buses are. So there's a balance of, you know, we already kind of made a difference to that budget, right? And I've been driving by there.
Because there is a path there now.
And looked at it, yes. And where they park their cars is not ideal either. So we will be talking about it within the next few years again, probably the whole outside part, you know?
And we've done a lot of patching on the exterior lot. And when they repaved, I think they repaved Highlander at one point or something was going on and we actually, the town actually did patch some of the lot, the holes for us. And they just, it just pops. It just opens up again.
It's like your home, you know? There's things that you have to do that are underneath that no one sees, like when you put the roof on and, you know, or you have to have a new septic put in because you have to live. It's not a pretty thing that you have to do, but it's something that has to be done because you have to maintain it. So, any other questions for the budget? If not, let's move on to Mr. Novak, summer committees.
All right. It's a fun, fun topic.
Good slide in there.
Outstanding. So I just want to make a comment about professional development here in West Milford. And I would just say I've been very proud of the product we've put together the last four years in terms of professional development. West Milford has traditionally been a district that abandons professional development following a meeting and a discussion like this. And I would really hope that that's not what happens going forward. We are in the process now, and I mentioned in our presentation about the fourth year of Readers and Writers Workshop. It's actually the ninth year. And that is because the district abandoned it the first time that we tried to implement Readers and Writers Workshop training back in 2009. If we hadn't have been then, we wouldn't have to be talking about it now. So I'm very proud of the, the product that we put in place. I believe it is something that begins with this group, with our retreat. We just had an amazing meeting where we talked about district goals. And I can point to every summer committee on this list and every professional development activity that we have implemented and show you that it relates directly to our, to our district, to our building, to our individual staff PDPs. So I'm very proud of it. So I'm gonna jump in and talk about our summer committees, which of course, this is a month earlier than, than when I would usually be presenting our summer committees. Summer committees are usually approved in, in May. So to your point, Mr. Drew, we are not complete with all the committees that are on here. We still have our calendar math committee, our data, data team, our district data team, I said data twice in there, district data team, our math committee to talk about our enrichment placement. We're talking about Algebra I for 7th grade. So there's a number of math committees along with our district data team that'll be on the May education committee agenda. So they'll, they'll be on there, absolutely. The ones that are on now are the ones that we can talk about for now. And also want to point out that half of the summer committees that are up for approval are funded through Title II-A, which is not a locally, that is not the West Milford taxpayers' funds. That is through our federal grant that is specifically designated for staff development. So that's what, that's what, almost all, almost half of our committees tonight are through Title II-A.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Could you point out, could you tell us which of the committees are covered by this category?
Sure, yeah, it says there, but I'll point it, I'll point it out as I go through it. So.
It says it on the motion.
All right.
And, and also to an, to an earlier point, each of these committees are proposed and recommended through a collaborative effort between myself, the supervisor, and the staff members who are also on these committees. And I do see a number of those staff members here. Mentoring committee person, you raise your hand. I'm gonna call you out, apologize. So first, I'm gonna jump on number 47, which is our educational technology committee. Number 47 and 48 go together. This is a committee who comes together each year. This is the, the group who guides our, our work in digital citizenship, which has been a significant component of some of the things that we do in our classrooms. It's also about student engagement. A number of years ago, we implemented a program, a model of technology implementation called SAMR, which you've mentioned a few times, I'm gonna go into the whole thing, but it's basically a Bloom's taxonomy for how you would use technology tools in the classroom. We've seen a rapid growth in the last four years in our use of Chromebooks and informational technologies in the classroom. The amount of teachers who are looking for and asking for Chromebooks and getting their hands on technology has grown exponentially. And that begins with the work of the educational technology committee and, and the things that we're doing and talking about and sharing in those PLC groups monthly. Those, number 47 is funded by Title II-A and number 48 is funded locally. Number 49, District Mindfulness Committee. One of our board goals last year was about health and wellness. And we have had a district mindfulness committee in place for the last, this will be the third summer where this group has met. Last year, we implemented, we introduced Serena Luray to the group, who is a high school teacher. In conversations with Serena recently, hopefully in the, on the May committee, summer committee approval, we are gonna have a secondary mindfulness committee put together, which is composed just of middle school and high school teachers to take that conversation to the next level, what it means on a secondary level. For primaries to this point, it's been a elementary focused, focused group. Again, it's, you know, we see this and, and I don't know if Mr. Trent Acosta's here, we've been talking about some work going forward with PhysEd. We see our work with mindfulness and physical education and health as the first line of modern, modern healthcare. And we see that in every, every sense of the community, whether it's, whether it's drug abuse, whether it's social media, whether it's students afraid to come to school, dealing with the whole child rather than just the test score is, is very important. So that's why we find it important and that's why we are hoping to have that as a, as a summer committee. That is also, number 49 is funded through Title II-A, which is federal grant money. Number 50 is our mentoring committee. And number 50 and 51 go together. Mentoring committee comes together each summer and we discuss our mentoring program for, for new staff. We look at our handbook, we take a look at new, new regulations that come down from the state, we update everything for the next year. And then we plan for number 51, which is our mentor training, where our mentoring committee and myself will meet with mentors of new staff and train them on how to be a mentor. One of the biggest shortfalls in school districts is that they hire a new staff member and sort of, you know, release them to the wolves. And I think that's not just an issue in education, I think it's an issue in, in business as well. And good companies and good schools who train the trainers do a better job with that. So we've committed that, committed to that over the last few years and the mentor committee and the mentor training are very important for that. We have three days that we like to call new teacher torture. It's actually new teacher training where our new staff comes in for three days at the end of August. And one of those days, our mentors will meet their, meet the new staff member and then train them for things that need to go on, you know, the things they need to get ready for throughout the school year. And they meet periodically throughout the year. They, I think they meet about 10 times throughout the year. That is also funded by Title II-A. Number 52, this is a goal that the district began in 2015, where we began working with Character.org and the, the approach toward seeking recognition with schools of character, whether it's state school of character, national schools of character. This district character education committee should be the crown jewel on, on that process. 2015, we began and at this moment, each of our schools has been named as a state or national school of character, which we should all be very proud of. This is the committee that's gonna apply for the district of character. And that, that should be the, you know, like I said, the, the banner that, that brings it all together. So this committee is going to come together, bring the, the great promising practices and all the work that has gone on in our district since 2015 and prior to that, before we even began with Character.org, some of these things were going on. Bring them together, determine which processes that worked out in one school should be applied to all, and then take a look at that application process.
So you're saying that's the last year for that committee?
This should be for the last year for the application, application process committee. Number 53 is our reading specialist committee. This has been a traditional committee. It's absolutely, in my opinion, absolutely essential for our six reading specialists to come together and talk about literacy across the, across the district. We, we do analyze data within that group and now that we have tools like Linkit and some other data sources, we're able to take a look at reading levels and identify patterns and really take a look at the good work that they do. In the history of the reading specialist group, part of their day weekly was to come together and meet and talk about these things in, you know, in the recent times with, with budget cuts and, you know, taking closer look at school budgets, their time has been more maximized for, for student impact, which I think if you ask them, they, they find it to be more effective, that they're gonna, they're able to have more hands-on time with the students and working on early literacy. But they also need time to talk and be together. So the summer committee is a good time for them to, to come together, take a look at the year, the year that was, identify patterns and help each staff move forward going for, for each school year. They're also an integral part of our encore program, whether it's a school that has a halftime encore basic skills teacher or, or full-time. And each of our reading specialists come, comes for that over the summer. Numbers 54, 55, and 56 all go together. This is, again, this is, directly connects to two of our major district goals this year, one being differentiation of instruction and number two with our focusing on the writing, writing across the curriculum. Number 54, we mentioned in the budget slides earlier with the word work spelling committee. This is the group of passionate teachers who are coming together to take a look at and work with the, the materials that we want to put in the hands of our students and our staff going forward. So it's a, it's a committed group. The idea for the group came from our, our passionate teachers who, who want to move that program forward. Number 55, this is a, a group who's gonna take a look at what, how we assess writing. This is going to take our current writing assessments across the board and make them more standards-aligned. So hopefully, and that's, you know, talking about, coming back to the, the phrase of test scores, the closer our instruction and assessment relates to state standards, the hypothesis is that the better our students should do on those state assessments when our local assessments are aligned to standards. So that is the, one of the primary focuses of number, writing assessment committee, number 55, is to, to make our, our assessments more standards-based. Number 56 is the ELA handbook committee. This is a group that got together last summer. We have had significant change in English and Language Arts over the last, probably over the last three or four years. And we've radically changed many of the things that we do. So we've been looking at how, how do we put that all together into a handbook for, you know, earlier we talked about new staff. So how do we put that together if you're a new teacher coming to West Milford or a teacher who, who wants to have a little bit more of a, of a guide for the, the things that we do? How do we assess? When should we administer our Fanta Seminole benchmark assessments? How do we look at readers and writers notebooks? Those types of things. That is what this committee is coming to, coming together to, to, to put in place. I believe that's, I believe that's it for now. And as I said, I'll have a handful of committees to present further at the May education committee.
Did you have a question?
No. I've worked in four districts, I've never seen this many committees anywhere.
Got a good thing or a bad thing?
Well, there's some things I'm really confused on. I think at some point it, it is a good thing. And on another level, when we're looking at cuts and district-wide budget difficulties, then it's not a good thing. I also don't know what, how are they, I, I think it's probably like professional development, I'm assuming, how they're set up. How are they signing in? Where are they meeting? What requirements are for each committee? Like, I don't know any of that stuff, so I don't know what's positive and negative yet, you know? I will say some of my observations that I find strange. One, the mentoring committee. I believe tonight we're cutting five elementary school teachers. So I, I couldn't imagine that we'd be hiring new teachers next year to be mentors. And then, so, so 50 and 51 are confusing. Why are we still doing that? And our mentoring program in West Milford has always been a topic. And our mentoring program and my philosophy has always been top-notch. I don't know why we're spending that many hours in recreating it every summer.
It's not recreating, it's staying top-notch.
Okay. Staying top-notch. Then, the person who is fabulous on fifty-seven and fifty-eight running the first teacher orientation activities isn't even on those mentoring committees. So it's just confusing. I don't know, I'm uncomfortable with a lot of them, and nothing to do with the people personally, but I guess I just have more questions on what are the requirements for each committee? I really would like to see what Terry said before, is more PLCs, you know? Data-driven, where's the data-driven stuff? And I think that's going to come with Linkit, and like Nicole said before, like, we're headed that way, but I don't see it yet.
So at Ed Committee, I presented the district data team, which was going to be a committee proposed for this agenda. However, we don't have all the staff members' names, so we pulled that one until we have a complete committee to present to all of you, which is exactly what you were just referring to.
And the only last comment, I mean, it's just, it's a lot, you know? Fifty-four and fifty-five, I added the numbers, I mean, it's like almost fourteen thousand dollars for, you know, just ELA stuff. You know, that's a lot. And if it's amazing and it's worth it, I just want to know that it's worth it, and I guess I don't know that yet, so I'm just putting it out there. I am uncomfortable with some of these, and I am going to trust that they are amazing and awesome, and I hope that they come through first, and then I get to see some more info on them.
Nicole?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I guess maybe my word of the night is balance, right? And I think it comes down to, every one of us around the table has said, or complained, or mentioned that we want a top-notch district, and we want to excel and have kids who are excelling, and we're so proud of where seniors are going, and all of these great things. But to do that, you have to keep raising the bar. And to do that, you have to make sure that you have staff who are happy and trained, getting what they need to get their jobs done. And because they're spending their day in front of students, working with our students, the only time for them to do these kind of additional asks is over these committees. And so it's not like, you know, I'm on ten task forces in my day job, but I just fill my day with conference calls and meetings because I'm not in front of people all day long. So I think we have this expectation that we want to take this district to another level. It's a balance, you know? We want to take these programs, you know, to make our students better, smarter, better testers, you know, enriched compared to these high-level districts that we're always throwing around. You need this stuff. There are a lot of them, but I think we've seen kind of the fruits of the labor happening, you know, over the last year or two, with a lot of, three years, with a lot of these things. So, I don't know. I think I commend the work that we're doing, and I think professional development, training, and all of these committees are really adding a lot of value.
It's a lot, all at once. I think it's some, in previous years, we've approved these piecemeal, maybe, some in April, some in May, some in June. I think to see them all at once may be a little startling, but...
Maybe because it's linked with the budget sitting here before.
That's possible, but I keep hearing PLCs, and maybe that's something we'll revisit and take a look at, and how do we use those better? How do we get our district data team involved with the PLCs to really help these teachers crunch down data, drill down, use that data, communicate with parents, get some sort of plan together so they can call a parent whose child just took the star math assessment and didn't do well, and really get that going? So perhaps we can connect with this stuff. I think it's a good starting point.
I'm not saying that the work of these committees is not important, because it's very important. But for me, and I think for a lot of educators, I think the important thing, when you have a PLC, a professional learning community, you involve more teachers in decisions, and you involve your supervisor. Your supervisors are able to drive those committees, those communities, and I think that's stronger to involve more people than just a select group, and of course, the budgetary concern is another thing. But I just wanted to make it clear that I am not against these, this work, I just think it could be done differently and more effectively, and I think that it would benefit everyone if it was done, including more teachers. Because we don't, I mean, it's just a select few.
Definitely, on the back of the budget, it makes it really uncomfortable. So I'm going to vote to possibly approve cutting people, and then I'm also going to vote to approve having staff members form the mentoring committee. So it just feels really uncomfortable, you know?
Yes, absolutely.
I think we probably shouldn't have had it on this agenda, because there is always, because those questions come up during committee, and you would have seen the agenda, like, there's a lot of things on this agenda in this personnel.
Yeah, and I want to honor, you know, the people that are losing their jobs, that's a difficult place to be in. And because of student enrollment, and because of our budgetary stuff, like, I understand the balance, and I respect that, Nicole, I like those comments, you know? And that's exactly what I'm feeling tonight, is really torn, you know?
Yeah, it's hard.
Because, yes, the budget, I do, you guys have done an amazing job, but there are still people losing their jobs tonight. And it's a really difficult spot to be in as a board member to then approve, you know, this other stuff, and I'm struggling with that tonight, so I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Novak, for your presentation, for your report, actually. Under Special Reports and Correspondence, Mrs. Francisco, I need a motion for, to approve the minutes.
I move to approve the March 12th Preliminary Budget Hearing Special Action Meeting Minutes, the March 12th Executive Session Meeting Minutes, March 26th Workshop Regular Meeting Minutes, and the March 26th Executive Session Meeting Minutes.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. President's Report, oh my goodness. We've been talking for quite a while. I only have, really, two things that I wanted to let everyone know. We had a very successful goal-setting session with New Jersey School Boards this past month, and the goals that we set are in the agenda tonight, that we're going to be accepting them as the board goals and also our district goals. And I'm hoping, we're looking to put our goals on our agenda, so that this way, everyone will see them each time that they come to a meeting, so that they know when we're talking about the district goals, what goals we're meeting. And also, I just want to, again, give a big shout-out to Barbara and Maintenance and Chris, the bleachers are coming along so beautiful, that the high school field is going to become a gathering place for our community, where when you go up there, you will be proud of West Milford, our band, our sports. Everyone will be able to utilize that field and be able to be proud of what's going on up there. So I, and I want to thank everyone who, you know, put the time in to get this out there, because it is something that is, it has been needed for a very long time. Now I'll move on to public comment. Members of the public, members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first for five minutes for each speaker for a period of thirty minutes, and then, time permitting, other public comment, limited to five minutes per speaker, will be allowed until the thirty-minute time period transpires. All members of the public speaking during public comment are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to give their full name, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during public comment. Anyone signed up? Anyone wishing to speak?
Yes.
Come on forward.
Hi, my name is Kristy Florrie, my address is sixty, Upper Greenwood, Lakeview. I'm actually speaking on behalf of my good friend Jennifer Awaztruck, who has spoken successfully on behalf of our class for the last few years. What I want to speak about is class size of the current fourth-grade class set of living with Lake Elm Tree. So, on behalf of Jennifer, we are aware that the board is faced with tough decisions regarding the budget. In two thousand fourteen, our then-kindergarteners were split into three classes due to high enrollment. Presently, they are in the fourth grade. They have always had three sections. This has been an amazing opportunity for our children to thrive in this class setting. They have been able to get extra help and attention that they have needed to be successful on the level. We are concerned with the class presently being considered to be divided into two sections, which would make these classes twenty-five or more, especially depending on if there's summer, higher summer enrollment. So these children are presently able to get the extra help and more support they need due to their current class size. We are hoping that the board will do the best thing for our children and continue to keep the class sizes as they are. And we also would hope that they would look at the overall makeup of the current class as a whole and their current success before considering eliminating the third section. Although they are getting older, the curriculum is only getting more difficult and workload increasing. So again, thank you for your time, and we certainly hope the board will just continue to do the best thing for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
No.
Come on forward, please. You're speaking on something on the agenda, correct? That's on the agenda?
Yeah, we're on the agenda.
No, no, I mean, as far as the item is on, the other, no, no, the other half of that comes at the end. I know it's long, but, anyone else wishing to speak?
Move to close public comments.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I need a motion.
All right, just going to make one quick amendment, correction to the agenda. Page nine, Resolution Number Seventeen, a name was added today to the rehired list, non-tenure certified teaching personnel. The name is Melissa Berg, B-E-R-G-H.
I move to adopt the agenda. You have more?
Yeah, and on page thirteen, sorry.
Go fast, I'm not just kidding.
I was letting them clap. Page thirteen, Personnel, Student Affairs, Resolution Number Forty-nine. We're going to add a name to the District Mindfulness Committee, Melissa Berg. And Resolution Number, on page eighteen, Personnel, Student Affairs, Resolution Number Sixty-nine is going to be pulled because it is no longer warranted.
Now, now...
Wait, 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 number sixteen.
Pulled because what? I didn't hear it.
Okay, the, it's no longer necessary.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Which one are we pulling?
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine, that's what I thought.
Move to adopt the agenda as amended and presented.
I need a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to go into the budget and finance, I'm going to let, I'm going to let Mr. Drew do this one.
I'd like to move on to number one.
Second.
Any discussion? Will?
I move to reduce the total budget by three hundred ten thousand, one hundred fourteen dollars, which would reflect a zero total budget increase from this current year to the one being presented tonight.
That's a motion? So are we, then you would just, you have to vote on the motion?
If somebody seconds it.
If there's a second, okay. Is there discussion? Any discussion? Can you repeat that?
I'm moving to reduce the total budget by three hundred ten thousand, one hundred fourteen dollars.
Any discussion? Nicole?
What, is that, where did that amount come from, and why now versus through the other discussion that we've been having at this point? It's just so late in the game, we've talked about it so much.
Oh, I sent an email on Friday to the board, and I didn't get any responses, and my thought...
You could not get responses?
That was a violation of the Oprah Act if we responded.
So any one person could have called me on the telephone, because that's not a violation of Oprah. Is that correct?
You need to be very careful.
Is that correct, Ms. Butler?
Your communication was sent to the group as a whole.
Would that be correct, though?
So there should not have been responses.
But if anybody called me, would that be a violation of Oprah?
You violated it by sending it to everybody, I believe.
I didn't violate anything.
By, you communicated with the group.
We're not allowed to have a discussion, you can...
That's not a violation of Oprah, and that's a pretty heavy accusation, and I could retort that in legal ease.
If there's a discussion based upon, that comes from the open invitation, which was, your communication was to everyone, there cannot be communication that would then be violative of the Open Public Meetings Act, because it would be discussions with individuals which would have, which could have the same effect as being a discussion of the group.
Now, the way you're wording it is not my interpretation, and I would like to further discuss that possibly in executive session. So to answer my colleague, I see that this budget being presented is going to greatly affect the 2020, 2021 budget, because not only will we have the additional aid cuts, but we will have, which I'm sure, because history says so, a total budget increase that will have to absorb, and also, God bless you, and also, we'll have the reserve funds that are being used as revenue from, that's being proposed for the 2019, 2020 budget. It will need to be absorbed somehow, some way, because I, once again, don't see that the following year's budget is going to go down any. So that's why I'm proposing it tonight. I think that more cuts need to be made, especially with the additional cuts that were in the slideshow this evening. So I think that more has to be done, and I have proposals.
Okay. Anyone else discussion on the motion? Because we need to make it, before we get any further into that, we need to decide whether or not we're going to move this forward and have the discussion. Anyone else? All right, I call a roll call for the motion to change the budget to cut...
Mr. Sidewis.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
Come back to me, please.
Mrs. Dwyer.
No.
Mrs. Fritz.
No.
Mr. Ofshinsky.
No.
Mrs. Romeo.
No.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
No.
Mr. Drew.
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, so now we can move forward with the motion that was originally moved. Any discussion on the budget as it was, as it's spread before you? Mr. Drew.
We're undoubtedly going to approve this budget. I would like you to just ask Mr. Kelly to look at the options. There may be something, maybe not, maybe not, but it could save a lot of money before we actually spend the money. Let's look at, we looked a little deeper at the field house, and I think came up the asterisk.
Any other discussion? If not, Mrs. Francisco, roll call, please.
Mrs. Fritz.
Yes.
Mr. Drew.
No.
Mr. Ofshinsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mr. Sidewis.
No.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes, and thank you again for all your hard work. And Will, I think that probably if we had discussed it in, going back two meetings ago, maybe there would have been more discussion on your motion. Okay, move on to...
Thank you, Barbara.
I'd like to move on to number two through ten.
Second.
If not, Mrs. Francisco? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
Item seven, what is that?
We get funds from the federal government. This is the consulting firm that puts that together. If you recall, a couple of years ago, when we did the new wireless system, we were able to get forty... to get 40 or 50% of the funding returned to us through category two. So this is the company that we hire in order to wade through all the federal regulations so that we get our fair share of this money from schools and libraries.
Any others in session? If not, Mrs. Francisco? Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
I'd like to move item number 11, transfer of funds.
Second. Any discussion? Mrs. Francisco? Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
I'd like to move item number 12, transfer of funds.
Second. Discussion? Mrs. Francisco? Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
I'd like to move item number 13, through the panel.
Second. Discussion? Mrs. Francisco, roll call, please. Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Abstain.
Good. Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Abstain.
I'd like to move item number 14.
Second. Discussion? Mrs. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
I'd like to move item number 15.
Second, I need?
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Francisco? Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Drew. Nicole?
Yes, I would like to move items one through 70 under Personnel, Student Affairs.
Second. I just wanna wish the people that are retiring a happy retirement and thank them for their years of service. I am personal friends with a few of these people, and I wish them well. I hope that their retirement is, is a happy and long one. Any other discussion? If not, Mrs. Francisco? Mrs. Francisco?
Want to give them another minute to go through it?
Well, yeah. Got it.
Recognition that 69 was withdrawn.
Ah, yes, 69 is withdrawn. Ah. Can you come back to me?
Sure.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer? No to 46, 48, 50, 52, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, and yes to everything else.
You have to write that down.
Should I say it again?
Yeah.
Okay, no to 46, 48, 50, 52, 53, 54, 55, 56, and 57. Keep your pen handy. They're not funded. Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
I abstain on 13, 15, 16, 24, 31, and 55.
And yes to the rest? And yes to the rest. Okay. Mrs. Romeo? Mrs. Romeo. All right, Mrs. Romeo abstains from 15, 16, 28, 29, and 31. I also abstain from 52 and 61. Is it? No, I'm not done, sorry. Okay. No to 50, 57, and 64. 64? Yes. And yes to the rest? And yes to everything else. Sorry. It was a big motion.
Why, does it pass? Do some of those pass?
It passed.
Yeah, I don't know if all of them pass.
I think they did. They did. They did, they passed. Yeah.
65 is in question.
Because there's seven people present, so you only need four votes for these motions to pass.
Fifty, fifty-five, you only had, you had, 55, you had one no and one abstention.
We had...
That's still five votes.
We had five, right?
Yep. Yeah, that's the only one that you had.
Yeah, that was the only one that was close, 55. Thank you for your report, Mrs. Fritz.
And 57, you had two no's.
You're welcome. 57 had two no's.
And 52 no's.
Now, Education, Mrs. Dwyer?
I'd like to move items one through 11 for approval.
Second.
If not... Oh, good, okay. If not, Mrs. Francisco, roll call for Education, please. Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz, would you move...
I'd like to move items one through three under Policy.
Second. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please. Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Congratulations, you could stop recording that tape.
She's gonna sell that on eBay. It's gonna make us a lot of money.
Put in a West Milford museum.
Okay. Committees, Parks and Recreation, Mr. Guarino is not present. Safety Committee, I have a meeting tomorrow, I, a meeting tomorrow, no, Thursday.
It's not tomorrow, it's somewhere...
It's Thursday, it's Thursday the second. I'm sorry, thank you, at the library. Superintendent Roundtable, Mrs. Dwyer?
Okay. We talked about the school calendar, and we have another meeting set for the 9th of May. Yeah.
The State County School Boards, Monday night is our meeting, so I don't know if anybody's interested in going. I'm going. I believe Mrs. Dwyer's going, if anybody else has said, the barn. Will we go in?
I will not be going today.
What time is the meeting?
I think it's safety, isn't it?
Security, school security. School security. No, I don't think it was school security. I think it's... That was the meeting before. No, I think it's this one. Oh, okay. I'm not sure. I have to check your email. They had to cancel their meeting because they couldn't. Federal officers. New Jersey School Boards, we had our train, our goal training training. I don't know if anybody signed up for any training coming up with New Jersey School Boards.
I did.
You are?
This upcoming weekend.
You're going to the...
The regional leadership training.
Oh, we did that. Yeah, we did that last year. If, if you haven't done your required training, your board training, please remember that you have to take care of that, so. Legislative, I'm sorry.
On the New Jersey School Board, they are planning a trip to Trenton on May 16th to discuss various issues with our legislators, which seems like that may be a good opportunity for us to express our disposure with the funding. So I'm just pointing that out, that maybe we might have some kind of discussion about potentially sending...
Is that something you were gonna have?
I don't know if I can. I have a couple Eagle Scouts that have to kinda accommodate here.
Was that something in your legisla, I didn't mention?
Oh, no, I actually, I'm gonna save my report till May. I was too focused on the budget.
Dave, maybe that might be something that you...
Yeah, I'll have to check my calendar.
Okay.
That just seems like that maybe...
We'll be, we'll, we'll have committee meeting before then anyway. Okay?
Raise our hands inside.
Did you wanna go? I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I didn't mean to put it that way, but because you...
I didn't mean to put it that way. I'll think about it.
We'll talk about it another time. Technology, Mr. Guarino's not here tonight. Again, township, the, the, the joint are committing.
We, yesterday, we met with the mayor and two council people to discuss some proposals for Hillcrest, and right now, nothing is definite, so there's really nothing to say at this time.
We're, we're, we have opened up a communication with the mayor and council, and we're hoping to keep our, keep communicating.
I have a few updates from CASA. The last meeting was on April 8th, and myself, Mr. Romeo, and Dr. Anamon attended. They had several events that took place in late March and early April, the teen vaping awareness, teen summit, and hidden in plain sight. The group talked about how unfortunately, these events were pretty lightly attended, and how we can increase that in the, in the future, maybe working with the district and partnering with some of our events, like Safe Night and things like that, to bring more awareness to these events. Last night was the first stigma-free task force meeting at the Highlands Family Success Center. Attendance and enthusiasm was great. Ms. McQuaid and I believe Mr. Ofchinsky were both in attendance. They are hoping to hold a teen-oriented party at the end of the summer, possibly at the teen center, similar to the CASA beach party that they've done in the past. This would be a great opportunity to spread information about what stigma-free means to the kids, as well as how they can help make a difference. They're looking at more details on that event as they work through timing for those. That seems to be the challenge. They're also looking at where to target around town, where they can put up signage around stigma-free, the library, rec center, shop, et cetera. They would propose holding a lunch and learn for employees at these locations to provide the signs, and have someone from CASA present information on what stigma-free means and how to answer questions that may arise from the public. So it sounds like, anything else that either of you wanna add on that? Sounds like it was a good, it was a good event. Okay. Couple other upcoming things. June 1st, there is a senior citizen health fair that will be held at the high school. There'll be a number of vendors on site, as well as a medical drop box, fraud alert information, several adult health screenings. I have a list, if anyone wants to look, of all the different vendors that'll be there. Seems like a great resource for our seniors. June 4th, I, that is the correct date for the DUI, DUI reenactment?
Yes.
Was questioning myself on that. And also, they mentioned that information on the parents who host lose the most that will be attached to prom bids. And on June 10th, they're looking to hold a community awareness dinner, which they've, I believe, done in the past, again, not as well-attended. Looking to enhance the program to include some of the young people in community work that they do, the teen summit team, the DUI team, the real kids whose posters were chosen up to be displayed at the teen center. So looking to kinda make that a bigger event, and hopefully draw more attendance at that. That's about it. The CASA grant year wraps up in June, so after that point, things will be on hold until...
They had their semi-formal, right?
Well, it's not CASA.
Oh, it's not CASA that does that, oh, okay.
Like we were saying, it's...
Oh, I guess I thought it was...
Yeah, changed hands a little bit, but they did have the semi-formal, and thank you to Acapulco for hosting, because it was pretty wonderful. Yeah. I hope one there.
And, and board members do know that they are invited for the demonstration on June 4th. The, our rep, Kelsey, has put it out for the DUI. If you haven't seen it, it's, it's very interesting. It is, it's very moving, and it definitely does move the kids. So if you're available during the day that day and would like to come, maybe just give a heads up and let people know, okay? Let's move on to old business. Anyone have anything for old business?
No, I just, I just wanted to say that this DUI presentation, I believe, is done every other year, and it was started by Mr. Anamon, our, not Mr. Anamon.
No.
Mr. Anzalone.
Yes.
Mr. Anzalone, our former PE head, so he, he does to him.
Yeah, and, and you're right, I, the first one, the first one was really...
Yeah.
Very, very emotional, and, but they, they're doing, they do a great job in it, and it definitely is a topic that needs to be addressed. Will?
I just wanna make a comment about how we are doing math differently as a result of the pressure that the board had put in prior years leading up to this year. I think personally that there is a systemic change that is occurring, and I do feel that the results will start being visualized once, once next year and the year after, and so on and so forth hit. I think that understandably, it's a little bit of an impatience in regards to results, but I do think that they are coming.
And I think, I'm sorry, and I think we have to thank Dr. Anamon and Mr. Novak for leading that charge.
Next. I agree.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, like to close old business.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? New business. Anyone have anything? Will?
I'd like to suggest to the Operations and Finance Committee that they place on the agenda the discussion of updating the Long Range Facilities Plan, which hasn't been updated since 2005, and I know that some of the, most of the projects are done, and I know that's how we're supposed to base our capital reserve expenditures out of. And the second thing I'd like to suggest discussion about is boards of education have the ability to create what's called a current expense emergency reserve account, and I'm just going to read to you the language inside the law. "The funds in the reserve shall be used to finance unanticipated general fund current expense costs required for a thorough and efficient education. The account shall not exceed $250,000 or 1% of the district's general fund budget, up to a maximum of $1 million, whichever is greater. A board of education may appropriate funds to establish or supplement the reserve in the district's annual budget or through a transfer by board resolution at year-end of any unanticipated revenue and unexpended line item appropriation amounts. Withdrawals from the reserve shall require the approval of the commissioner unless the withdrawal is necessary to meet an increase in total healthcare costs in excess of 4%." So again, the name of that reserve account is Current Expense Emergency Reserve Account.
Oh, and the update from the Long Range Facility Plan, that's generated from the state of New Jersey, that's not something that we...
Anything else over there? New business?
Move to closing the business.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll move on to our second part of public comment. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes for each speaker for a period of thirty minutes, and then, time permitting, other public comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the thirty-minute time period transpires. All speakers are asked to give their name, give their full name, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during public comment. I believe that Kay and William Fuller are signed up for this part.
We're not really the rookies. We're Kay and William Fuller, it's F-U-L-L-E-R, we live at 16 Spruce Point Trail in Hewitt. I hope this is the last time I ever have to talk about this. We are here this evening for four reasons. The first and most important reason is for the mental health of our child. The second reason is because there appears to be a breakdown in the district's policies and procedures. Next is because of the fact that there's a lack in offering resources to the families who have children in the high school. The third reason is because of the bullying and harassment that we have endured since December third, which are the results of the flaws in the system. And last, because we hope, by speaking this evening and telling our story, that no other child or family will have to endure what we have. On December third, our child failed a random drug test. When the substance abuse counselor called to inform us of the result, instead of offering us any counseling or even some professional advice, she only spoke to us about the punitive, both present and future damages that would occur. P.S., she'll claim otherwise. The only advice that she did land on the phone was that if we weren't satisfied speaking with her, that we could, we would have to speak with the superintendent. She transferred our phone call, and we did get the opportunity to speak with her, which we're grateful for. We believe that because she transferred our call to the superintendent, and by the principal's own admission, she was spoken to about transferring our call, and she elected to take her personal, I'm sorry, her professional embarrassment out on us by calling.
I have to stop, I have to stop you here, the lawyer's telling me that I, we have to stop.
Just, you should be aware that if you make comments about individuals, those individuals have their own rights as far as slander and any other issues that they have against, and realize that it is not appropriate to be discussing personnel matters in a public...
That's why we're here.
I don't know what else to do.
That's why we're here.
If you want to table this as a, as a private session, that's fine, but we're going through the entire process as open and honest.
We have had more than one sit-down with the principal, the vice-principal, we've had a sit-down with the guidance, we've had a sit-down with the doctor, we've gone through the proper channels. And everything that you are hearing this evening is the truth and nothing but the truth, and you'll find that we are not going to slander anybody, we are not going to insult, we are just telling the cold, hard facts.
We're, we're just, we just want to protect everybody's rights here, so.
I've been called out by name at this table, by employees, I don't think that...
Excuse me, Will, 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 listen to me, Will, listen, this, we are not to talk during this part, and we're getting advice from the attorney, so let's leave it there, okay?
There's a, and there is a difference between a public figure and when you're dealing with a personnel matter.
So what is your advice on this?
Can we set up a meeting with them?
Yeah, I would.
Would, would, I think, I think what we're hearing here is that, from the attorney, is that we should have a meeting in private with you, not in public, the board.
That would be wonderful.
You know, but you, you need to know that we probably will not give you input, we, we will just hear you out.
Honest to God, we are only here this evening just to say that to our child, that we have done everything humanly possible to show her that we are supporting her and that she is right, that education should be the number one goal here at West Milford Education, and it has failed us, that is why we're here.
Okay, but we will, if we have a private meeting, then the members, the staff who is being talked about...
It's not the staff that's, that we're, that, maybe you should listen further, because it's not, this is just a story of what happened.
But, but even by not saying the staff member's name, because we only have one person in that position.
You're making us give our first, last name and address, so I don't understand.
Because you're here presenting yourself, you are here, they are not.
Presenting some serious flaws.
I will say this, as far as, as a parent, she attended one of our meetings, and professionally it was not presented well from her, so I...
Why don't we, I think we need to set it up privately.
Do better to have a meeting, that way you would have the opportunity to present your concerns to the Board of Education.
You could say more.
And we, and we would have the attorney present, and you would, the attorney be able to tell them what guidelines they have to follow.
Can we pick a date now then, please?
Sure.
Next meeting, seven o'clock.
Next meeting.
What's happening to our family is going to stop, and now it's continuing again.
Yeah, so we're here to put it to a close eventually, I mean, that's really what we're here to do.
All right, we'll, we'll do it next meeting, we have a meeting on May 21st is our next board meeting, and we will have you come in for executive session.
So we're going to use time while we work again.
It's at night?
Exactly, I work evenings, I work at Valley Hospital in the operating rooms, and here I stand again, and that was also part of, one of the things that we were going to mention this evening, that we're losing not only time out of our education, but we're, as parents, losing time from our jobs.
I have to go by advice of the council.
I understand, I do, I understand.
My goal here is, I want my daughter to want to start going to school and want to go to school, that's not happening at all, and it's related to the policies, the procedures, the four different drug tests, the, whatever's going on is not working. Her AV student, all the way to December, one failed test, she hates school, and now she's, I don't even know.
Okay, so, would you mind coming before us on the 21st?
No, no.
And we'll do it in private, in executive session, and then, huh? Then we can, yes.
We don't know all the details.
Right, and we want to...
Number four amounts to here.
Present the story.
All right, so why don't we, why don't we schedule that for the 21st, we...
We want to sit through this again, or...
No, no, we're going to do it, we're going to do it in executive session, we can set it, so that for, we could do a seven o'clock before our meeting, before the meeting opens here, we could, we could meet in executive session.
Okay, so May 21st at 7:00 PM, and where will that be?
That would be here in this building.
All right, we will be here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Will, we're still under, we're still in public comment, okay?
We've been emailed stories before.
And is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We need a motion for executive session, we do not have to come back to take action, so we will be adjourning for an executive session. I need a motion?
At 9:29 PM, I make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel appointments, resignations, current litigation matters, special education matters, and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable.
All those in favor?